We're live.
Good evening, welcome to the Kenmore Tana Tana Wanda Union Free School District Board of Education Meeting for November tenth, two thousand and twenty. District Clerk, please note that all trustees are present, present, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, next, Vice President Gianni will be reading our district mission statement, vision statement, and values.
Thank you, President Shamera. Our board and district vision is to create a community that creates dynamic learners who possess social awareness, confidence, and need and power to succeed. Our mission, Kenon School Committee will provide our students with ports and diverse opportunities needed to meet the challenges of an ever-changing world. And our values are mutual respect, independence, trust, teamwork, integrity, passion for excellence, and responsibility.
Thank you. All right, item four A is approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve?
It's on moved.
So moved by, I think that was Jen. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Leslie. Any discussion? Okay, there being none, call for a vote. All those in favor, so signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Item four B is the approval of the minutes from the October thirteenth, or Regular Board of Education meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
So moved by Tom. Your second?
Second.
Second by Jen. Any discussion? Okay, there being none, I call for a vote. All those in favor, so signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Unfortunately, we're back remote, so we don't have any president, we don't have any recognitions or presentations this evening, we'll move those. And hopefully, we'll be back in December, we'll see and move those to them. So our next item on the agenda is public comments. YouTube, the YouTube, YouTube Live chat is the platform being used for public comments during remote Board of Education meetings. I remember, as per Board, public policy that comments during public session are one-way communication. We do have some, we do have at least one comment tonight, I think we have one. We'll check in a second, but we have a comment from Jessica Brumbow, one seventy-two Southwood Drive, off of New York, one four two two three. The comment relates to getting, getting kids back to school. The Board has those comments, and we'll consider those comments. The public can access those comments on YouTube Live chat link. Were there any other public comments? That have come up since?
Oh, that was the only one.
Okay. All right, so we'll move on to item six, Board of Education Committee reports. I'll go through our list as I do if you have a report. Feel free to step up and make that. I know the Audit Finance Committee, Tom and I represent on that, and I know there wasn't a meeting this month. Did you have anything on that, Tom?
No.
How about the Board of Education sub, Policy Subcommittee? ECASB Budget and Finance Committee?
No.
How about the ECASB Delegate Assembly?
Legislative Assembly?
No, that's right, that's the Delegate Assembly, no, we didn't have that. Staff Development Policy Board, there is a staff development meeting coming up, November nineteenth, but there was nothing this month. The ECASB Legislative Team?
We met after our board meeting last month, on October fifteenth. And actually, one of the things that they proposed that we should do is send a letter to our federal legislators. So I have drafted a letter on behalf, on behalf of the Board, which I can share. But just to make Representative Higgins aware of the really, ultimately, the hope that a new federal stimulus could be passed. And you know, in light of the election being over, maybe that Congress will get moving on that. So that was something that was encouraged by all of the representatives there. And that's pretty much it. There's another meeting next week, so I'll be attending that week, that meeting, along with the Legislative Breakfast this Saturday, which I believe will be virtual again, so. So that's, that's that committee report meeting.
Thank you. How about the Family Support Center?
I was there at that meeting that was in October sixteenth. It was reported that the Family Support Center is currently providing virtual telehealth sessions to any and all district families that request it. They currently have twenty-two counselors. They also are providing some groups, some virtual yoga and meditation. They've reported that they're seeing an increase in anxiety and depression issues this year. And they are also offering help filling out the FAFSA form. They're having one family come in at a time to the center to do that at this time. You know, Tom, Tom also attended, I don't know if you had anything else to add?
Well, there was just, you covered just about everything, Jen, but there was one other thing that a guidance counselor from Kenmore West brought up about some West students having trouble academically, struggling to keep up with assignments, and you know, maybe she asked for some leniency on deadlines, or maybe grading, or allowing some tasks not to be submitted, just to give some kids a break, at least at the first part of the school year.
Thank you. The Save Committee, anything on that? How about Technology?
I know I attended that meeting, I was just looking for my notes, and I'm having a hard time tracking them down. Matt, I know you were there as well, I don't know if you have a recap for us, I remember discussion of the need for an upcoming strategic plan, and I know there was a lot of discussion around device, device usage for the students, but I don't remember.
Yeah, I wasn't at that meeting.
Oh, okay.
How about Wellness Committee?
I attended the Wellness Committee meeting on ten twenty-one. The focus of that meeting was planning the wellness portion of the Staff Development Day on, last week on eleven-three. The staff were given two hours in the afternoon to work on some wellness activities. So the Wellness Committee meeting, the team planned some group, some activities that could be implemented district-wide, and then each school had the opportunity to tailor that to their schools. So some of the activities were yoga, a walking step challenge, community talk circles, meditation, relaxation. Staff were also given the opportunity to go get their flu shot during that, that time. There was discussion that the activities could either be virtual or in person. I think that was about it.
Thank you. Those are official committees. Actually, there are two other, they're not really official committees on our agenda, but they're both groups that we've been invited to participate in, and we've had Board representation at, so. I'd like to report on those two. The first one is the School Counseling Advisory Council, which met yesterday remotely. It's a, it's a group led by two of our high school counselors, Kim Sedita from Kenmore East, and Janine Galanti from Kenmore West. The group's comprised of teachers and counselors, administrators, parents, and community members. And the main purpose is to monitor, update, and inform of activities in our district counseling plan, and receive, receive feedback on how we're doing with that, that plan. A major thing in yesterday's meeting was a sharing of things that, positive things that are happening in the counseling world in our district as a result of how we've adapted to COVID. There are some things that, that exist now that didn't, such as Counselor Connection, I believe at Kenmore West, it's a pamphlet that's a weekly email to students and staff with links to videos and other resources for managing changes brought about by COVID. There are weekly counseling center remote meetings at both, both high schools, where students participate that, that choose to, senior binders with college application and financial aid resources that, that they've developed, that can be shared remotely. Counselors conducting counseling sessions with staff members at both schools, this was, this was a very positive thing that they talked about, and how staff members are very interested in, in attending these group sessions. More, and more communication between our elementary, middle school, and, and high school counselors. So we made, just in the meeting, was really sharing those kinds of things. So that group meets three times a year, and we'll meet again, I believe, in January. The second group that, or meeting that I attended was of the Tana Wanda Community Working Group. A couple of months ago, James Harts, the Director of Community Development in the town of Tana Wanda, reached out to the school district to invite us to participate on this Tana Wanda Community Working Group. Trustee Morrow and I are both representatives on the committee, and I attended the, the first meeting, which was on October twenty-eighth. Supervisor Eminger from the town opened the meeting by saying that the main goal of the group was to ensure that the Tana Wanda Coke site is cleaned up of all pollutants that remained from the Coke-making process that took place there for many years. The majority of the rest of the meeting was, was a history of the site, and where we are presently in the, in the cleanup process. A lot of time was spent on some very technical detail, I think I know more about the Coke cleanup process than I ever thought I would know, but, but it's, 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 it's very serious stuff, and, and there's a great website that they point us to, it's called Riverview Tech Campus dot com. And if you could find out everything you want to know about that particular site and the process going on, where we are in that process. In addition to the cleanup itself, another major goal is to redevelop the site. They're looking at possibly a data center eventually being put there when it is cleaned up. The group will meet again on December third, but it's, again, it's something they invited us to participate in, and you know, Jen and I are both on that committee, and we'll, we'll, we'll keep up with that and keep you updated on that. Any questions on any of that, or any of the committee reports? Okay, then item six B is the New York State's Association of School Boards Convention, it took place last week. Update on that, I know a few of us participated in those workshops. They were remote this year. Anybody want to report on any, anything that you saw there?
Sure, thanks, Matt. Yeah, I want to thank the district for paying my registration fee for the pre-convention workshop on communications, and then for the entire virtual convention the next week. And I sent everyone a summary of highlights of, based on my notes, that communications workshop, which stressed different ways to handle external and internal communications, you know, during the COVID crisis. But the, when I tuned into the convention itself, and you know, there are concurrent sessions of all week, on lots of different subjects, I tried to select a strand on equity and diversity. So I'll just share briefly some of the highlights that spoke to me as a board member, and I hope, you know, I have some relevancy to all of us. One of the themes that emerged was that districts should be urged to develop a collective growth mindset that diverse students can succeed by culturally responsive classrooms. And a lot of initiatives are supported by the state ed department. And one of the suggestions of specifically for school boards across the state was to adopt a resolution to commit to diversity, equity, and inclusion. And there's a model for the, through the Ethica City Board of Education that has done, created a resolution like that, so it's an idea. But the general question that pervaded all of the sessions that I attended was, how can we disrupt or dismantle inequity? Disruption and dismantling inequity came up time and time again in that language. And I'll just highlight two of the panels. One was a really interesting one, where there were two speakers from two school districts on Long Island. The Uniondale and Oceanside districts, which are geographically kind of close, but demographically extremely different. Uniondale has a population of students ninety-seven percent of color. Oceanside, by contrast, is eighty-five percent Caucasian. But they've created, they've kind of bonded together, and created a program with an acronym called Bridges, where they get together occasionally, set of students, and have dialogue and civil discourse. Their aim is to create change. They do joint projects on things like voter registration, immigration issues. They visit college campuses on Long Island, like Hofstra, and even venture into Manhattan, which some of the kids from, especially Uniondale, you know, seldom get a chance to do, they take buses together. And so they get together, and it's just a ten-minute bus ride, school bus ride, you know, back and forth between the districts. And it's created, you know, a real awareness for all students of the perspectives of inequity and diversity, and just coming together as one. And it just caused me to think, you know, since we're a first ring suburb, that maybe we could initiate, or consider initiating something like that, a joint partnership with St. McKinley High School, which is barely across, you know, the city border from, from us. Just something to think about. And then the second panel that I wanted to highlight was two presenters from the Buffalo Public Schools, from the Office of CLRI, Culturally Responsive Curriculum Programs. And they help train staff throughout the public schools with the goal of, again, dismantling systemic racism in the schools. And they have several initiatives that are all sponsored, again, by the state ed department for curriculum infusion, they call it, not replacing things that are already in the curriculum, but supplementing the curriculum. For example, that sixteen nineteen project that the New York Times created, and is, you know, getting a lot of attention since, over the last few months. They supplement instruction when, say, eighth graders are studying the Civil War, by some of the materials that are available through that sixteen nineteen project. So there's much more, I took lots of pages of notes of the convention, and if anybody has any questions about some of the other issues and suggestions about equity, inclusion, and diversity, I'd be happy to share them some other time.
Thanks, Tom. Anybody else? I also attended many, many of the sessions, either in real time or later on, watching the recorded, watching the recorded session, and I agree, there's, there's a lot of, a lot of good stuff there. Really enjoyed it. What I missed, though, was, you know, last year when it was in-person, you got, you got to network, you know, and you got to talk with other board members, and talk with administrators from other districts, and I think there's so much value in that, that we miss out on doing this stuff remotely, but, you know, it was what it was this year, and, and there were some, some very good sessions. On the last day, I was our Board Representative at the annual business meeting, and at that meeting, I was the voting representative from our district. The meeting was remote, of course, and it lasted four hours. It started eight-thirty on that Saturday morning, and it didn't end till, till, till twelve-thirty, and it only ended because we fell below the minimum two hundred and ten, two hundred attendees you need to have there in order to have a forum. Otherwise, it might, might be still going on. But the major part of the meeting was to discuss the twelve, twenty-seven resolutions that we looked at and discussed as a, as a board, and put our recommendations forward. Nineteen of those resolutions were recommended by NISBA, their Resolutions Committee, and all nineteen passed. And then there were eight that were not recommended by the committee, and none of those eight passed. So basically, it was basically what we had looked at, and what we had said moving forward with those. But that was, that, as far as that goes. Anything else on the NISBA convention? Okay, any other board comments? Leslie, I see a way.
Yeah, you did. I, I just wanted to comment on a few of the sports teams that have been pretty successful despite all of the challenges. Since I am a mom of a former cross-country runner, not a terrifically great one, but one who, she got to run with a cross-country team that actually won their NFL, so the girls' team from Kenmore West, and came in first in cross-country in the NFL, and the boys' team came in second, and I just thought, despite all of the challenges, that they're still really striving to do well. I found out that the Kenny's Boys Soccer Team is playing in the quarters as we're holding this meeting right now, so that's kind of a good thing. And I thought that, since my daughters both went to Lindbergh and had Todd Marquardt as a teacher, but he also was, he's also announced his retirement, and he's been the Ken West soccer coach for a while, so I just wanted to recognize actually, all of the athletes who, you know, in the fall overcame significant challenges in being able to, you know, just at least get something in, I think, you know, something good in, despite the challenges, I think that's just important that we recognize their efforts, so.
Thank you. Anyone else? I just want to take a moment to recognize and thank Superintendent, the Cabinet, our directors, administrators, teachers, all the support staff, and all the families in this district. Now, this continues to be an unprecedented crazy time, and I know that everyone in this district and in this community are, are working harder than they ever have to achieve the main goal, which is to provide a quality education for our students in the safest way, in the safest way possible. Families have had to make major adjustments, and, and the changes that are happening in plans and procedures are happening sometimes on a daily basis, sometimes on an hourly basis. And I also just want to thank Superintendent Samato for his, his way of communicating with, not only the Board, but the community through all this. So, thank you. Anybody else? All right, we're really excited about this next presentation. Our Student Board of Education Representatives, Lauren Reinhardt from Kenmore East and Kendall Brock from Kenmore West, have been working very hard on another new, new district initiative that we're trying to get off the ground here. So I'm going to turn this next part over to them, and they're going to tell you more about it.
Great, thank you so much, Mr. Shamera. I'm going to take a second and share my screen to show a short presentation that Kendall and I put together, so bear with me, I've never done this before. One sec. There we go. Okay, so I think, can everyone see that? If someone can let me know. Okay, great, thank you so much. Um, so first of all, I just want to introduce myself. I'm, as Mr. Shamera said, my name's Lauren Reinhardt, and I am the Student Board of Ed Representation from Kenmore East, I'm a senior, and I'm partnering with Kendall Brock, who is also a senior, but she attends Kenmore West High School. So over the past couple of weeks, and Kendall talked at the last board meeting about this, we've been working with Superintendent Samato and President Shamera on a new leadership program that we hope to implement into our middle schools and high schools district-wide, so we're just going to go through a quick overview and some more of the specifics that we didn't have last time. So this is just kind of a little diagram that really represents our program in the sense of that it builds on each other and that they're all connected. So as you can see, as our foundation for the program, we have something called the PLC, which that's going to be known as the Principal Leadership Councils. And there's going to be five, one at each of the represented schools, as we'll go into later. And those are going to be overseen by the Building Principal, and just a, a platform for student feedback from several different groups in the building, just so that we can yeah, just basically collect feedback and work on that. And then the next level, as you can see, we have something called the DLC, which, similar to the PLC, the DLC stands for District Leadership Council. And this council is the bridge between the PLCs and the higher-ups, in this case Superintendent Samato, and the Board, and Mr. Shamera. So the DLC will be overseen, as I previously said, by the Superintendent and the Board of Ed President. And the DLC will work directly with us, Kendall and I, as student Board reps, and the DLC will be made up of a represent, two representatives from each represented school. So members of the PLC that will then go up to the DLC level. And then Kendall is going to go into a little bit more specifics on basically what all that means, because that was just a general, like, sense of what we're talking about, but Kendall's going to get in more specifics.
So as Lauren said, I'm Kendall Brock, I go to school at Kenmore West, I'm a senior there. And so we're going to start with the PLC, which is the Principal's Leadership Council. It will be overseen by the Building Principals, and there'll be three students chosen for each grade from that. So that's going to entail all of the high schools and all of the middle schools in the district will have their own PLC. And for the students chosen, we want to have students who are not afraid to speak up, who are going to talk about the problems that them and their peers are facing throughout their days. And those students will be put on the PLC through teacher recommendation forms, so they won't be submitting them themselves. Instead, we want the teachers to recommend them, so we can have, try and have some students who aren't as involved in other activities that are going on throughout the building. Then for the DLC, we're going to take two kids from each of the building's PLCs and bring them up to the district level to meet with, as we said, Lauren and I, and also Mr. Shamera and Mr. Samato, but it'll always be with the Board President and the Superintendent to meet with them, so we can get more of a district view of what some of the issues in the buildings are, how we can fix them, what we can all do together. And we wanted to make it very clear, too, that this is not a student government or a replacement for a student government, it's just another forum to get feedback from all types of students in the building.
Yes, and as far as we are in the process right now, last meeting, last month, when we were talking about this, we were awaiting a meeting with the Building Principals, which we have already had, and we've, we received a lot of great feedback, and we got approval. So recently, I think it was either last week or two weeks ago, we sent out a letter, basically, that summed up all this information, and we sent that out to the Principals for them to distribute to their staff and teachers. So as of right now, we have, I think, ten responses, because we've gotten some teachers to fill out the Google form that we attached, and basically, it's just a quick recommendation form so that they can indicate some students that they are interested in participating in this program, so. That was just a very quick overview of kind of what we're doing, and we're very excited to get this program running, or get this program off the ground.
Great, any, any questions? For the young ladies?
I have a question. Maybe you said this, and I missed it. How are the student, how are the students chosen? Is it by, did you say it's by teacher recommendation, or do the students volunteer?
It's a teacher recommendation form that we have, because we wanted to see a variety of different students. We didn't want the same students that always volunteered to be the ones volunteer.
Yeah, that was going to be my next comment, is I was on the Kenmore West shared decision-making team as a parent rep for three years, and it was a fantastic team, I really enjoyed my time there, and this, we had a lot of student involvement, too, which was fantastic. But like you said, attended. But like you said, it tended to always be the same kinds of kids, the really motivated kids who played sports or they were on the student council or I felt that there was oftentimes a lot. There was a large section of students who were not represented there and whose opinions and voices weren't being heard. So I think that's always important to make sure that that the, all of the student body is well represented. So I think it's great that you guys have come up with this plan. It sounds really great. And I'm glad, you know, teachers are involved in helping to guide some students to participate who maybe normally wouldn't.
And as Lauren said, when, when girls presented this to the principals, it was, they, the principals seemed very excited about this and it was, it was great to see. So I know we're looking, looking forward to working with this group. Can't wait. Nice job, ladies. Any other questions or comments? Okay, we'll move on then to item seven A, our this, and our Superintendent's update portion of the meeting.
Thank you very much, President Shamera. And I, I just really want to commend our, our young ladies, our young student board leaders, Lauren and Kendall. I'm so proud of you, the initiative that they've been taking. Folks, it's, it's never easy to do not only what they did tonight, but these two fantastic, brilliant young women stood in front of all of our principals and presented this. You want to talk about that they just had it going on in that room. They really knew their stuff and they were just leaders that made us proud through and through. So really, congratulations to both of you for taking this, this initiative. You're, you're the best models that any of us could wish to be. So thank you very much, Lauren and Kendall. President Shamera and board members, there's, there's a bunch of things under my update that I do want to address this evening. First, some procedural things that I want to make you aware of. So today, later on in this meeting, we'll have a section, it's a new section called Tenure Acknowledgements. And during tenure acknowledgements, what a new thing that we're doing to just celebrate success in the district is every time that somebody reaches the point in our district of achieving tenure, we're going to read their names off at the board meeting in which they're going through for their tenure. So after you approve them, they're on our agenda, then we will read their names at the end of that meeting. Typically, we have a longer list, more towards the beginning of the year. We're playing a little bit of catch-up this year. So the point is, is that once we read off that list, we'll send them just a nice little, a nice little letter congratulating them and then also having that, that recognition, that sheet that was read off of at the board meeting. What we find is, it may seem like a very small little, you know, step, but the culture that we're trying to continue to cultivate here in Canton is that pride in being in Canton. And nothing says that more than some recognition of the hard work that they've put on or, and they've gone through and giving them that, you know, that, that show of support for their career that they, great career that they have coming in front of them. So that'll be this month where you'll see how that works. Also led by Patrick Finelli in coordination with President Shamera, actually, all of this has been in coordination with the board, President Shamera, Gina Santa Maria, who you know, always does a fantastic job as our district clerk and clerk to the board, as, as well as Patrick Finelli. Also going along with culture, this you know, I hesitate to call this a good thing because good thing is usually a celebration. But why this next thing is a good thing is because going along with the culture of support for each other, the same way that when we have tenure recommendations, we also want to support our, our colleagues that are in need in the district. So a process and procedure that we came up with was you know, sometimes employees can work together at one point of their career and then maybe there are different buildings or different jobs still in the same district. They're connected, but not as connected in the day-to-day. And all of us go through hard times, especially when we lose a loved one. Okay, the loss of a spouse, the loss of a grandparent, aunt or an uncle. Excuse me. And what Patrick Finelli has put out to our staff is if we, if we ever know of this and we want to share it with colleagues so that colleagues are aware of maybe when a wake is going to be, maybe they can send a special card to a colleague just to be uplifting for that colleague. And then every month at the board meeting, we're just going to take a moment of silence of any of those that we've received the previous month to recognize anybody that has gone through any difficult times and also bring to attention how we want to wrap ourselves around them as a community. So that's, that's another, just a piece that we're going to introduce in December. Patrick has put it out to our staff so that our staff sees what that's all about. So those are the two procedural things that I wanted to really share this evening. And now we get to kind of the meat and potatoes of, of what I really want to give you as an update. So if you don't mind, I am going to share my screen here. Bear with me, I'm not as good as Lauren at really getting to this really quickly, but let me see if I can't figure it out. Okay. Okay, I'm anticipating that everybody can see an outline of a PowerPoint, correct? Okay. Okay, so folks, we, we've heard a lot of information in the past few days. And I wanted to update the community of where we are. I wanted to update the board of where we are. I want to update everyone on what all of this means, at least what we know at this point. And then how we're moving forward as of Tuesday evening, okay, which is right now. Just to recap, we've been letting everybody know in our weekly connections what it means to be in a yellow zone. So if you remember a few weeks, a few weeks back in the weekly connection, we brought up what the Cluster Action Initiative is that the governor introduced to our state. And it's a new program that targeted specific areas in New York State with increased prevalence of COVID-19 transmission. Excuse me. So this is, this is the groundwork of what has gotten us to this point, okay? There are varying degrees of restrictions on in-person activities based on what cluster you're in. And those three clusters, once again, are red zone, orange zone, and yellow zone. Red are the most restrictive, yellow the least restrictions. Nonetheless, a lot of stumbling blocks that come in all of those zones. The community heard from the governor yesterday and from our Erie County executive, Mr. Polling Cars, that we are currently now as a county in a yellow zone. Now, folks, what does that mean and what does our designation mean? Very clearly, in a yellow zone means certain things like schools can operate in-person instruction, but 20% of the in-person population has to be randomly tested on a weekly basis, and that's students and staff, all students and staff. Now, what was kind of unprecedented is that the majority of Erie County was put into a yellow zone. These, these zones throughout our state have typically resulted in, you've heard the governor use terminology, phraseology like block by block, not even whole zip codes, but street by street to really narrow down transmission. The problem that we're facing as a county is that this is much larger than block by block in our county. For example, I'm trying to just see what the news was that came through today. I'm reading from my phone because I tried to bring this up, but an update from the governor, statewide positivity rate rose about three percentage points yesterday. That's in our state. Okay, now our cluster zones, when you take out the cluster zones, it, the state is only at 2.56%. The bad news is that Erie County is now a cluster zone. And Erie County is one of the highest rates within our state. So hang on one second while I change slides here. So what are the challenges of being in a yellow zone? This designation makes it very challenging, okay? And what do I mean by that? Limited resources. Folks, you know, everybody I, and I hear from a lot of families, well, we'll be willing to test and, and we're going to have to be willing to test if we would, if we wanted to stay open. But here's the thing that people need to realize about the testing. Right now, we're waiting for the, the testing to be provided by New York State Department of Health. And we're working in collaboration with them. But even when those tests are provided, it's not just as simple as a school saying, okay, we're going to test. Okay, we have to work in partnership with, for example, you see that next bullet, New York State Department of Health, BOCES, to determine what, what, how we'll conduct this required testing. And so, for example, maybe some of you heard in the news, one of our local school districts became a designated testing site. Now, even when you become a designated testing site, finding the staff to, that are certified in order to provide the testing is a whole nother ballgame. So understand as much as it is to see that Erie County is all in this together, it also has made this even more difficult because now we have multiple school districts upward around 20 that would need to do this testing on a weekly basis, sometimes even a daily basis in order to hit the weekly mark of 20%. So districts are working extremely hard to keep schools open in person, but we must continue planning based on all these circumstances, okay? So what we're going to be asking our families to do, folks, we really need to know as we're continuing to go through this, this next week, that not week, this next really three days, today, tomorrow and Thursday, we're going to make our determinations based on all the information that we could gather. Now, part of that information is going to have to be from our community. We started by sending out a Survey Monkey link today through text and email, and we're asking people to respond by tomorrow. Now, I know our community, you know, Samato, how, how do you expect me to know this by tomorrow? Folks, I'm not taking down your name, but I really need to know, for example, let me give you some of these other challenges, okay? Let's say for our kids coming back in hybrid, let's just focus on our elementary level for a moment. Our K through four students. Our K through four students, if we already had families coming back in the hybrid, and let's just say, I don't know, let's say 80% of our families were coming back in the hybrid and 20% were staying, saying that they wanted to stay in VLA. Now, for families that say, I'm refusing to test. I don't want my child tested. Even if I'm there, I don't want my child tested. Because by the way, folks, we, we're not quite sure what the testing model will look like. We just don't have any information. Will it be a drive-up station? Will we work collaboratively with a partner that might be able to set something up in one of our parking lots and we get some of this testing done on a weekend perhaps? But let's just say of the 80%, another 20% of those 80% say, no way, Samato, you're not testing my student. Another 10% say, no way, you're not testing my students. I'm going to, I'm going to be honest with this Board of Education and with our community. We don't have the capacity just in staffing alone to be able to grow our virtual learning academy at the elementary level. Folks, we've worked around the clock since July to, to keep that virtual learning model up and running for people that want to stay in virtual instead of coming back to hybrid before our hybrid families knew about this. So if, if we're asking you to test and you're saying, no way, I'm not testing, you cannot be in school if you're refusing to test. That's one of the things that comes along with a yellow zone. One of the considerations that we have to make. How are we going to get 20% tested? And what, what does that exactly mean? And I, I may have missed just one second here. Okay, I want to go back to all of these challenges for the yellow zone and then I'll go back to that slide. Acquiring enough tests. Folks, just to come in with our model that we plan to implement Monday, remember this coming up Monday, the rest of our elementaries and our fifth grade students are supposed to return. That would mean that we would have to administer as a district 860 tests per week approximately. 860 tests just to reach 20% randomly. So you're, you're understanding that's without our secondary even coming back. That's what this yellow cluster zone means. Now, I'm not telling you that we've deemed that it's impossible, but as you could see, a number like that is staggering. We're hearing from Erie County Department of Health, which has been wonderful. They're working day and night, folks. But Erie County Department of Health does not have the capacity to do this for school districts. Especially not all the school districts in Erie County or the majority of them. Securing consent to, to test sufficient numbers of students and staff. So once again, as your superintendent, I am not going to clear anybody to test students without that consent. What we're sending out right now is a survey. It is not just, it is not the consent. You're not filling your name out to it. But this is the first step in, in that our next step would be to obtain that consent. Arranging for trained licensed professionals to conduct the testing. We already talked about, spoke about this. Now, there's been talk about, because right now our school nurses are not approved to do this testing. But here's, here's the conundrum that we'll be facing. Even if the state does change that and say that our nurses can be licensed to do this, we would still have to train all of our nurses. And then we have a limited supply of nurses for our schools in order to provide 860 tests per week. That would almost make this, well, inevitably, it would make this their full-time job. And then we're leaving our schools without an, potentially without a nurse working during the day because they're focused on testing. Depending on the model that we would go with, that's something that we're looking at. How do we get around that? Testing sites, logistics, processing testing results, 860 tests per week. How long can, a question, how, how quickly can the test be processed? And how many per day and per hour? Now, we know that the tests that they're, that they're sending us, at least the, the reporting to send us, it takes approximately 15 minutes to show a result. But there's also some questions that we have with that testing. Also learning the accuracy of that testing. So there's a lot more answers that us as, as as our area superintendents, we've been coming together all week. We will, we came together again today. We were together yesterday. We will come together again on Thursday. You will notice that some are unfortunately making some decisions to move to a fully remote because of some of these challenges. Reporting the testing results through New York State. So there's a system in New York State, after we do the tests, all of these testing results have to be reported through the ECLERs reporting system. For each test that we administer, there's about 15 points of data per test. So visualize an Excel spreadsheet with 15 different columns on each subject that you test. That's the amount of data that has to be entered into the ECLERs system. Student and family concerns over testing methods. So for example, the testing method that we would use, now folks, it's, it's not, it's not that one, so I don't want to scare everybody or give you false information. It's not that one that has a swab that goes in your nose and then all the way down into your, your throat and past your nasal cavity. But it is the one that goes into the, the, just the, the very tip of your nose. And it's swabbed around, at least to my understanding at this point. But it is not the one that is, is uncomfortable as the ones that we've seen or that we've come to at least watch on TV. But nonetheless, a, a family, a, a mom or a dad of a kiddo that's in kindergarten or first grade has a lot of different concerns about being has a lot of different concerns about being testing tested, sometimes than a kiddo who's in ninth, 10th, 11th, or 12th grade. So we have to, we have to recognize those concerns. Increased concern among families and demand for fully virtual option due to increased community spread. No more capacity at the elementary school level. I've already explained how this works. Folks, we can't just keep on moving kids when we're back in a hybrid at the elementary level to a virtual model. We 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 don't have the capacity to do that as a district. We've already met our max capacity in order to do that in K through four. If you remember, that's what got many people very angry a few weeks back when we had to give our new our virtual kids that would stay in virtual, a new math and ELA teacher if they were choosing to remain home because we want to still provide the best instruction possible. So the last point here, at any point with little or no notice, schools may be ordered by New York State to close in person instruction that we might be moving to red or orange designations. Folks, I can tell you from information that I've obtained through our conversations with our state. Erie County has gone to a yellow, and let there be no mistake. There were areas in Erie County that if all of Erie County didn't go to a yellow, would have been red or orange because the rates are that high. This is kind of like our our blessing in disguise to be in yellow as a county to try and stay away from this fuller closure that would come with an orange or red designation, an orange and red designation. Schools can only stay open if you have 100% testing before you even enter the school. And then you would have to have 100% testing three days after reopening. So you can see all the challenges that are in front of us if as a as a community, as a society, we don't get these rates under control. So to go back to this, this survey that we sent out only focused on four questions. What school does your child attend? What is your child's grade level? What is your child's cohort? And will you consent to having your child participate in random COVID-19 testing at school? So with all this being said, we're going to continue over the next 72 hours to really look at all the data, all the information, all the collaboration that we possibly can have and what's in front of us. I will tell you, I'm not trying to be gloom doom. Some some things that I want our community to be prepared for. I think probably it is, it is fair to say that there's going to be a good chance minimally that we're going to have to put a halt to our phase in temporarily. Now, that doesn't mean throw it out the window. But this next group that's coming in on November 16th, folks, I want you prepared that that group is may have to stay virtual. May have to stay in the remote model. I also want our families prepared for our kindergartners and first graders and our special classes that are currently attending. You also need to have that same preparation for next Monday. Now, I I promise you with everything that our team has that we're going to look at every way possible that we can that we can accomplish this with testing. We're we're already going through checklists. We already have our conversations happening with agencies and partners to hire people to come in to do this testing. But folks, this is a very tall order, and I'm not quite sure that we can accomplish it. So I do not want to lie to you as a community. I want us prepared, just like we've always said, if we have to put a halt to some things for some weeks until rates come back down, and then we may have to move forward with that. That final decision has not been made yet, but I want people prepared. Okay, that's 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 what it boils down to. That's the message that I have to tell you tonight. I know that for our families, it's extremely stressful. It's extremely stressful. But I'd rather give you the worst case scenario tonight and tell you what we're trying to work for. But I'm going to be honest, folks. It's going to be probably inevitable, no matter what, that we're putting a halt to that November 16th coming back. Those chances are even more slim than the slim chances of us remaining in school with our kindergartners, first graders, and special classes on Monday. Now, this doesn't mean permanently. But we do have to step back and wait for these rates to come down, or we have to be able to fulfill this testing. If we can fulfill this testing, we're going to. But I will tell you, there is not one district in this area that has figured out how to fulfill this testing at this point. Now, I'm hopeful we have a lot of great heads at the table trying to figure this out. I'm hopeful that we could figure out the testing. But now I just want to put you, put us into the realm of understanding. Folks, it's not just the testing that we're going to be challenged with. The testing that we're going to be challenged with with rates going up every time that we have somebody designated as COVID-19 positive, the the contact tracing that sends our staff, our students home in isolation and quarantine for 14 days right now is is rising every day. Every day. So every time we have one of these incidents in the school, now I'll I'll just tell you. We have the incidents on the rise. And and folks, please don't, please don't go down this road that we're 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 telling adults as a community, we all need to do better with this. Our our teachers, our our students, our families, we all have families. Okay? And trust me, I've seen very few cases where, actually, I've seen no cases where people are going out saying, hey, I want to catch COVID. Right now, I can tell you that we face as a society that we're becoming more complacent. And the more complacent that we become, the easier that this transmission becomes. The governor had a great line the other morning on a conference call with the governor. Let me just get this line for you. Okay? Hang on, stay stay with me. He was telling me about how he was telling us about how some of the counties downstate by going into these clusters have moved from, for example, 8% to 3.5%. 12% to 2%. Okay? People, he kept on saying, people don't like the restrictions, but the restrictions have worked. Okay, rigor, here it here it was, rigor, discipline, restrictions, and enforcement. That is really how New York State is looking at reducing the spread of COVID. And the the good news is that we did hear a little bit more, I know Pfizer with the, we we heard about that on the news earlier this week with potential vaccine. It hasn't been FDA approved yet, but it gives us hope on the horizon. But folks, we we are faced with, as a community, the good news is that being faced with these rye, this rise, we haven't seen a huge spread in the schools. But this rise in the community has put us into this yellow zone designation that it is going to become increasingly difficult for us to run our schools. So we we've had, we have this little thing to close out. Always wear a mask in social settings, practice social distancing, stay home when you're sick, avoid close contact with those that are sick, always cleaning your hands often in sanitizer. Trust me, folks, remember, these practices don't eliminate COVID-19. They help to reduce COVID-19. So I know this is a grim picture. I know that it's it's not the the great thing that we wanted to hear. On Friday, I was just telling people how we want to speed up. I don't want people losing sight of our plan. If ultimately we have to put a hold on things, we we have our plan for moving back in. We have our plan for moving in at a more rapid pace with our secondary. We just might have to put other dates to that to that plan. Friday during the weekly update, I will, I will tell you the the final decision, but I I'd rather that people are preparing for worst case scenario. And then hopefully I could come back to you on on Friday with a better scenario than what is in front of us right now. I'm I'm hopeful, but I cannot guarantee that at this time. We we are meeting around the clock, folks. I I do promise you that. So with that, I will open it up to questions from our board or any any points of clarification at this time.
Superintendent Sumato, I have one question. There was a bulleted item on one of your slides that read with little or no notice, schools may be ordered to go fully remote. And I just wondered, would that order come from the governor's office or from a state ed?
Yeah, that's that's correct. Dr. Rigstad, it's a it's a great question. So for example, when I said it's it's a blessing that we're in yellow, our rates just in Erie County alone, to my understanding, have raised substantially just in the last day. Well, we can get to the point, and we were told this by the governor, that at a moment's notice, it will be, okay, Erie County or these subparts of Erie County are red zones. And when you're a red zone, it's it's not just schools that we're talking about, but business, a lot of things are shut down. We we've given, we've given you those facts in the weekly update. But to my understanding, it it's not going to be with the kind of notice that we've also had for a yellow zone. This is kind of our warning area to try and pull out of this, and we have to do everything we can as a community to pull out of this.
Thank you.
Superintendent Sumato, I have two questions. One is if this, if a school does have to close down, it's my understanding that nobody's in the buildings. Is that correct? So that even teachers would have to be at home, teaching from home?
So it in a yellow zone, so that's a great question, Board Member Bataglia. We're not, we're not officially sure of that yet, but what it seems like the guidance that we've been told, because I actually asked that question, is that that's not, that's not accurate, that that staff can work in the building when you're in a fully remote option. But one of the things that we're going to have to consider, okay, is all the mitigating circumstances that surround that. Okay? Whether it be from spread, whether it be from how many districts are actually going to remote, if that was the case. Folks, it's it's not far fetched to be able to see that it it could lead to, I I know I was just watching the news. You know, don't don't think I'm texting. If you ever see me pick up my phone, I I'm looking at the news as it develops. When President Shemera said hour by hour, it's happening minute by minute. And we're getting updates on districts that are going to remote. A lot of times we have our colleagues that will actually send us a warning text. I know two that are either tonight or by the end of this week announcing fully remote. They're in a different circumstance than we're in. Those school districts, some of them may have already been in a hybrid. And it becomes a little bit more, even more challenging for them and the logistics. The one thing that we can say, and I don't want to say that that like this is a good thing, but I I am going to put it out there. Our district, our teachers are doing a phenomenal job. Our families are doing a phenomenal job. And the one thing that Kenton does have to hang their hat on is that when we're faced with this type of adversity of of possibly going into a remote, we've learned a lot already how to make this remote model much, much better than where we were in the spring. So the stress is on our families right now. The the stress of a family having to think about this and and continue to do this is astronomical, and we have to realize that I'll be honest, that's what that's what I lose sleep about at night. Okay, but our teachers have been doing a phenomenal, phenomenal job, our administrators really. And this crew in central office is second to none. So at least we can say in the worst case scenario, we're we're still going to be doing a very good job to provide an education.
Hey, thanks for that. My second question is, do we know who's bearing the cost of doing the testing? Is that going to be on the district?
Oh, Board Member Bataglia. The test, the tests, the tests will be provided by the state. That's what we've been told, although we have not received the test yet. So I I know that's going to be a tall order with such a large region. It's not, you know, it went downstate, you had smaller sections that were designated this way. And they they had to provide tests. Now you're providing tests for an entire Erie County or most of Erie County. So I'm sure that's going to be a challenge for the state, but the school districts are going to be responsible for the personnel and the cost of testing itself. Okay, so if let's say if we partner with somebody and they're even able to do this, I would imagine it would it would cost us, at least early estimates, would be more than $10,000 a week in order to get this type of testing done. Okay, so it it will, and that's on the low end. So there there will be an astronomical cost that comes along with it as well.
Thank you.
Any further questions or other questions? Okay, just a couple of things I wanted to close off with. There's been a lot of questions about athletics. I can tell you that I I don't know where winter athletics are going right now. And folks, as much as I'd love to sit here and give you more updates on winter athletics, it it looks like high risk sports are definitely going to be out, but you know what, we're not even going to be talking about athletics when we're talking about moving to remotes because we're in yellow zones. So I I don't, I'm not going to cancel out athletics at this time. I'm just telling you, it it's second in the pecking order to instruction and figuring out instruction right now. So that's me being honest with our community. Mr. Banker has been working his tail off to 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 really make this happen. I'm proud to say our athletes are second to none when it comes to class and character. Our boys and girls were always masked up, following rules, running around like crazy on soccer fields, leaving their mask up even when other teams weren't. I told I told you that and and signified or gave you examples of that last meeting. And just just to say how proud we are of of all the work that families have really done to be class acts here in Kenton. And they they've really done great, really teaching their students and our our schools, really teaching their our students what it means to really follow and and stick by something that is challenging. The President Shemera, the other thing that we have under my section is an approval of a memorandum of agreement between the district and the Kenmore Teachers Association. So I'd ask Jeff Richards to just give us a quick summary of that agreement.
Yeah, so annually, by March 1st, prospective retirees are to submit their resignation for the purposes of retirement effective July 1, for those that are first eligible. After March 1st, obviously COVID hit March 13th. And after that point, intermittently, President of the KTA, Stu Miller, and I would discuss the prospects or the likelihood that there may be others interested in retiring mid-year. They have an entitlement to retire mid-year. Anyway, so we mutually agreed that it'd be a good idea to allow those individuals who hit their anniversary date sometime during this semester would go on or about the last day of this semester. So we wouldn't have intermittent retirements throughout the year, but it'd kind of be a midpoint date. So we think that we support the idea, and I'm going to ask the superintendent to recommend to you to accept that MOA.
Thank you, Jeff. And I do agree. So, Mr. President, I would recommend to you to present to the board for approval this memorandum of agreement.
A motion to approve the agreement between the district and the Kenmore Teachers Association?
So moved.
So moved by Tom, second?
Second.
Second by Leslie. Any discussion? Okay, there being none, I call for a vote. All those in favor, so signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously.
Okay, and one other thing under my update before we get to instruction and support services. I also, I want to bring to your attention that we will be on the consent agenda this evening. There is a an approval for our director of, Jeff, I have the title correct, right? The Director of Technology.
Integration.
That you will see. Director of Technology and Integration, and that's Ian Verrill. Mr. Verrill went through a pretty intensive and rigorous interview process and comes to our district with a lot of experience. And we're really looking forward to him leading our department. We have we have great people in that technology department, from our specialists to our integrators, to our all of our boots on the ground and our networking folk. And we're really hoping that this will put kind of a nice bow on everything and bring it all together. So we welcome Mr. Verrill to our team. With that, I want to turn it over to Ms. White for an update on instruction and student support services.
Thank you. I'm actually going to turn it right over to our interim Director of Special Education and Student Services, John Cole, to give us an update on special education enrollment and initiatives.
Good evening. I'm going to try to share my screen as well. So I'm new to this too, so people have to forgive me as much as they forgave the superintendent. So I'll share my screen with you. Let's start by just giving you some brief statistics on special ed in the district. I follow the same format that you folks may be familiar with in the past. First thing I have to say is just some personal observations. When I started this meeting, I told you that I spent some time in Kenmore Sweet Home. I'm actually starting to stop using the term Sweet Home and using Kenmore now more often. But the Student Services Office in Kenmore is absolutely phenomenal. So my introduction here was greeted by some of the most outstanding clerical people that I've ever worked with. So I do have to say kudos to the clerical staff in the Student Services Office and in particular to the folks that I work directly with, Christine Barth, Krista Young, and Casey. They're just fantastic. I wouldn't have made such a smooth transition if it wasn't for those folks. They really have the heart of Sweet Home and their special ed students at the forefront. So just want to share with you some special education trends and student services trends as we go through this slide presentation. Most of you are aware that the programs provided in the Student Services Office are quite extensive. I think a lot of folks just think that, you know, we're only responsible for special education, but there's quite a bit of services that fall under special education and student services. And you can see from this list, I wrote through each of them. But the second bullet down consultation, that's a particularly new area in Kenmore. We've opened several classes over the past couple of years in both elementary and middle school to service those students who are really are most significantly disabled kids, particularly on the autism spectrum. And with that came bringing them back into district from out of district placements. But with that came the need for consultation with experts in the area of autism and behavior. So we work with some outside consultants who are providing support, not only to our students, but directly to our teachers, so that we can keep those kids in their home school. I think folk, most of you folks know that when we talk about special education, we try to keep the kids in the least restrictive environment. And the further we get away from their home school, the more restrictive that program becomes. So Kenmore has done a phenomenal job over the past few years, really opening up the continuum of services at each of the buildings. And you'll see that briefly as we go through this presentation that, you know, each of our buildings has a full continuum of services and we continue to improve on that by really looking annually at our self-contained classes, our resource room, our consultant teacher programs. And not only can how we can best service the students that live in Kenmore, but how we can do it and really not put the district at a financial burden. So, you know, coming in new, I'm quite impressed with the continuum of services that you offer. Not all school districts do that. And for that reason, we have our number of students that are in out of district placements are remaining stable or even dropping in some cases because of the classes that we've opened at Franklin Elementary School and both of the middle schools. So the consultation piece is important, and it also involves the community agencies and the Family Support Center as well. So I said I wasn't going to read through this list, but I think a couple of other things that I'd like to point out here that I think are pretty significant that we talked about last year are the restorative practices, suspension deserve diversion and alternatives to suspension. I would probably bet that one of the most audited areas in education is special education. We have several areas that are audited by state ed to be sure that we're protecting the rights of students with disabilities. And one of those areas is suspensions. And I don't think there's one district in West New York that has escaped the eyes of the state in in having too many suspensions. And they actually unpack the suspensions by subgroups, by ethnicity, by male, female. And every district struggles with alternatives to suspension. And you guys are probably familiar with Larry Scott, but Larry is responsible for our restorative justice practices, which offers alternatives to suspension. So we're not always looking for that 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 pound of flesh, so to speak, when a student violates a school or school rule, but we're trying to find alternative suspension to keep our kids in school and keep the learning process going. So I think that's particularly important piece to point out to you. In addition to, you know, all of these programs, we have over 130 special education teachers, 14 school psychologists, hearing and vision, which for a school district is often also unusual. Most districts have to contract for hearing and vision. Kenmore has their own folks who provide those services to our kids. So it's not people that we need to bring in from the outside to provide those services for our kids. And we also have 16 speech pathologists. So we offer quite a range of services and certainly the staff to support those kids who are both virtual and in person at this point. I am going to share just a few statistics with you. Again, these numbers are based on, I follow the same procedure that had been presented before. I'm providing you here with year-end statistics, so they're from June of 20. Some of these numbers have changed since that point. You can see that as of June of 20, we had about 1,450 students classified that were school age. At this point in time, we're at about slightly over 1,500 kids. So since June, that number has risen about 50 students. And that's because of transfer students, students who are newly identified or who moved into the district, as I said. Graduates from last year were 119. We had 80 students that earned a Regis or local diploma, 29 students that earned a diploma plus a CEDOS credential, and 10 students who earned a credential only. The important piece there is that you can see over time, and we want every student with an IUP to graduate from high school. The goal is to have every student graduate with a Regis diploma. And that number is increasing each year. And that's what's important from this statistic is that students with disabilities are graduating at a higher rate each and every year. And that includes both Regis diplomas and includes local diplomas. Declassified students are those students that are exiting special ed. That number has remained the same for about the last two years. We're finding that the better we get with RTI, and I know you folks are all familiar with RTI, that the students that we do classify today are the students that really need special education. So very often, when a student is referred to special ed, they have gone through three tiers of intervention. And the interventions provided in Kenton are quite thorough. They're very research-based and monitored closely and altered if need be. So we don't necessarily have a huge number of kids that are declassified. And that I would attribute primarily to the students that are classified are truly learning disabled kids and not kids who have had a lack of instruction or lack of intervention. Transfer students at the time of June 20 was 108, and initial classifications were 136. That's actually pretty low numbers for a district this size. Out of district placements, these are students who through CSE are placed out of district because either we don't have the placement for them or they're just better serviced in an agency or a BOSI's program. Erie one BOSI, as you can see the number there, the agency placements are the ones I was referring to earlier. Those are places like Falk School and Center for the Handicapped and Baker Victory, those types of places. There will always be a need for agency placements. There are some students who are extremely medically fragile, medically fragile, who need significant nursing services that may not be able to be provided in a public school. And at times, there are students who have significant behavioral needs that are beyond what we can provide in a public school. So the need for agencies and Erie BOSI's and even cross-contracting with Niagara County BOSI's Orleans Niagara will probably always be a necessity. But you'll see as we go on, the number of classes that we're offering in district is meant to really keep our kids in district rather than sending them to out of district placements. And at this point, these classes are quite successful in district. Students permanently placed in other settings are students who attend charter schools or parochial schools. The interesting thing we're noticing this year is that there was a rise, actually. The number you're seeing there was based on an early start in October. The number of students we have attending parochial schools rose. I wouldn't say a considerable amount, but it did rise unexpectedly, primarily due to the fact that a significant number of parochial schools in our districts were offering in-person instruction and families were looking for in-person rather than a hybrid or virtual instruction. So we have a very extensive support system for our non-pubs. We have a special ed teacher in each of the non-pubs that's located within our district, and we provide a full array of services onsite. As you folks may know, most districts don't do that. Most districts will bus the parochial students back to a homeschool or the closest school and provide those services within the school, the public school setting. So for Kenmore to reach out to the non-pubs and support them and our students who attend those schools is fantastic. And I think it actually is the is the right decision to make based upon the needs of those students. Special ed accountability, this data I gathered directly from the stated website. I thought it would be interesting, and it was presented to you last year, that the special education costs, which tend to be quite high in Kenton, the state ed reported that our average expenditure for special ed student is $20,838. And you can see the New York State average expenditure is $32,359. State education calculates that based upon the number of stacks we file through our 611, 619 grant. There are ways to recoup that money, as you folks are probably aware. We use MEG to stack our students in special education. STACK stands for the System for Track and Account for Children, so that we can secure some of our high cost back for students who are placed out of district. And even those students who are educated within district, if they reach a certain threshold, we can apply for state aid on those students as well. Classification rate, this again is based on June of 20's number. Our classification rate was approximately 14.6. All those districts in New York State were 18%. I'm going to be honest with you and tell you, this is a little misleading based now on the number of students we have enrolled in the district, which I believe our total number of enrollment is about 6,400 or somewhere in that area. Somebody can correct me if I'm wrong. Based on that number and the number of students that are currently classified, which is about 1,500, we're more closer to the 18% classification rate than the 14%. So that is one thing that we do need to continue to monitor as a district, is the number of students we have being identified. I said to you earlier, I think Kenton does a really good job at not identifying kids who are truly not disabled. And that's really what state ed is asking you to do here, is to keep that classification rate low or at least equivalent with the state state classification rate. And if not, then you need to look at your early intervening practices like your RTI system. But I think our RTI system is pretty well intact and tends to is improving each year, particularly with the new adaption of the reading program that was done in the in the recent year. So I can answer for this part about that if you have some after this presentation. I wanted to just comment briefly too on some accomplishments that were done and kind of twist this to more of a positive thing. As I said, I think the special ed program here at Kenton is phenomenal. Last year, the district started chairing their meetings with psychologists who were trained last year to chair the meetings. And to be honest with you, what this has done is allowed, at least in my personal experience, has allowed me time to actually get boots on the ground and actually go into buildings and offer support directly. I think it's important that the supervisors and the directors of special ed be in those buildings and supporting these kids day to day when we can do that. So if teachers are struggling with content management, such as providing specialized instruction or behavioral supports, we can be in the building directly to support not only the consultants we have, but the teachers. So our psychologists have been chairing the CSE meetings for annual reviews. We continue as central office personnel, Christine, Krista, myself, and Casey, to do initial referrals and any meetings that parents may request us at. But it certainly has freed us up for us to be in buildings and much more visible to students and to and to parents as well. Last year, one of the reasons they decided to have the psychologists chair the meetings at each of the buildings was that it also offered a closer connection to families. They would be working with a team, not just from central office, but from a team who sees their kids on a day-to-day basis. I mentioned earlier that we continue to do program evaluation. We continue to monitor student needs to build the programs. An example of that was last year, an 81A was added at Franklin Middle School. The 81A is actually a student classroom for children with autism. The reason that was added was to offer a vertical continuum for kids. We had an 81A at the elementary level, and we needed, those students will be with us from K to 12 or from kindergarten to the age of 21. So we need to be sure that we don't offer just these programs at one particular age level, that these students can stay with us as they progress through school age-wise or vertically. So there was an 81A opened at Franklin Middle School last year, which I think is important because it really would not be, I think, in the best interest of kids if we kept them in an 81A in elementary school and then had to place them in a BOSI's program or an out-of-district agency. We have the expertise in the staff to do that. And as that, as our kids continue to age, we'll continue to look at what programs we need to offer vertically for our special ed kids. As you can tell, I don't know how to use my up arrow and my down arrow, so I keep going back and forth. But some other accomplishments is that, and I think we all know this, particularly with the COVID pause, is that we're seeing significant increases in student social emotional needs and intensity. So we continue to review our continuum of programs, as I mentioned earlier, what needs to be tweaked. That's what's nice about having Krista, Christine, and myself and Cassie being able to be boots on the ground. We're able to see these kids in person and really what folks are dealing with on a day-to-day basis and what these kids are bringing into school. As you know, we brought our special ed kids back. And I think first, and I think that was a great success, but there was a great need for a reintroduction to school for these kids. And we're still going through some significant issues with them. It's really a stressful time for parents and for kids. So we're constantly looking at our special ed programs and what we can do to offer these family support and the kids as well as they return to school in somewhat of a chaotic period of time. We restructured the 811 programs in the district. We made them more fluent as far as age grouping goes. They are now K-1/2s and 3/4/5s at the elementary level. Before that, there was a much wider dispers of grade levels rather than the cohorts of K-1, 2, and 3, 4, 5. You're familiar with trauma-informed educational practices that we partnership with the University of Buffalo on. I had mentioned restorative practices yesterday or earlier in place of suspending kids. Something that came up last year that you may be aware of is a statement of continued eligibility. State education came up with a new regulation that required all special ed teachers who teach in a self-contained classroom in grade seven through 12 to be certified in the area of instruction. all special ed teachers who teach in a self-contained classroom in grade seven through twelve to be certified in the area of instruction. So we have quite a few fifteen to ones and even twelve ones in our district where teachers, special ed teachers may be responsible for teaching a course content biology, algebra, earth science, et cetera. State ed gave each district until June of twenty twenty one for those folks to become certified in the area that they're instructing. And they have, we have worked with our staff in applying for their certification. Becoming certified involved, the school district filling out a form that documented they had. I believe it was three years of consecutive instruction in the same subject area. They didn't have to go back to school to get certified in biology, but if they taught that subject in a self-contained class for three years or more, we were able to document that and send that into state to get them certified. So no longer can you have just a generic special education certification or just one certification in biology. If you're going to teach ELA or English nine, you have to have that certification as well. So we have to June of twenty twenty one to complete that process and most of our teachers have completed that process and they're still going through, say that is still reviewing those applications at this time. So we're still working on that as well. Twenty twenty reopening, teletherapy is up and running. We I noticed last year it might have been a foreshadowing and I don't know if it was a good foreshadowing or not, but the previous presentation talked about teletherapy. Last year, I'm not sure why that topic was on there, but as you know, we are still providing virtual instruction and related services to about three hundred special education students. It's not easy. It's not easy for parents to do that. So we're still trying to always figure out better ways to to support them at home with their students with disabilities. But teletherapy has been up and running since March and instruction has been going on since we reopened in September. So all related services and programming for students are opting for virtual learning as COVID continues to play a role in our daily lives. We're also working with other agencies. There's been certain occasions where some families have had children with severe autism and they just were not responding to to virtual instruction and 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 really I, when I was still in Sweet Home, I participated in some instructional online courses with parents and their students and it just, it just was very difficult. So we have actually since I arrived in Kenmore, there's, there's a couple of occasions where we've provided alternatives to virtual instruction for parents. And I think it's worked out in the best where we tried to do as much face to face as we possibly could for for these kiddos who who need that. So one positive thing that's come out of our, I think, our virtual world is that our parent participation at CSE meetings has risen considerably. It's much easier for parents to participate in CSE and CPSC meetings virtually because they can do it from work, they can do it from home. And I think they would agree that it really offers them a more active participation. And and that is most likely to probably continue even after this pandemic pandemic is over. I had meant that we mentioned that we brought back our K twelve self-contained students in our first phase in. It's been going well. Students have adjusted to school. After a few weeks, teachers are doing well. We have some teachers, as you know, that are live streaming from their classrooms. So they're, they're both, they got one foot in the virtual world. They got one foot in the in the face to face world. So kudos to our special ed teachers who are really working in two worlds right now. And parents, the feedback for parents has been, has been quite good as far as the reopening goes. And moving forward and Kenton forward, as you're aware, Social Emotional Health and Wellness Task Force. Last year, there was the youth truth survey. Actually, that was some of that was put on pause because of the COVID. So some of that data still needs to be taken a look at and analyzed to determine what types of reports we can offer our, our K twelve staff and our students as well. Continuing with the elementary universal mental health screening, we're working with the Institute on Trauma and Trauma Informed Care, as I said, to the University of Buffalo. They offer free webinars for staff and families that are being shared through our newsletter and our emails. Introduction to Foundations to Safe and Civil Schools Within the Middle High School is continues as well. Okay, that was fast. Just a thirty thousand foot overview. And actually putting this together helped me actually acclimate myself to the district somewhat more. So any questions I'll take from from the board members of the superintendent.
I think we're good, John.
Okay, if any of you have any questions or you know, you'd like to talk to me at any time, I'm certainly valuable to do that. And again, thank you for the opportunity. As I said, I've only been here a brief period of time, but what I see is is pretty outstanding as far as special education goes. It's, it's a pleasure to be here and an honor to to work in this district. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. The other thing that I have in my executive summary, I shared a report with you with some of the data because of the cancellation of the region's exams and the three through eight state assessments last year and then the sudden closure. Our ability to assess our students was not the same as it has been in previous years. So the report is pretty slim this year. So we did share that as a report. Did you have any questions on this or on any other questions that I can answer?
Assistant Superintendent White, I have a question that is a follow up from a report that you gave on official opening enrollment at the October school board meeting. And when I look more closely at those figures, I understand as Mr. Cole alluded to that the private schools are maybe siphoning some of our schools, students, I should say because of smaller classes and in-person instruction. And there are maybe more families doing homeschooling, that sort of thing. But still, the drop off in our enrollment numbers, you know, seems significant. And I'm just wondering if this is a general cause for concern? And if so, are we considering some steps to remedy it?
Sure. Thank you for the question. If you can remember back in the time of consolidation, when they were doing an enrollment projection, the projection was that the the trend would continue to decline over time. And for us, we've actually seen it remain relatively stable. So it certainly does look quite different this year. Although we've seen, you know, we've seen some fluctuation. Our biggest impact, I think, this year has been kindergarten. So as I mentioned, in October, several of our kindergarten students decided to or our parents of our kindergarten students made the decision to not begin kindergarten this year and kept them home. And we aren't able to track them because they're not of compliance age to complete an I HEP process as part of the homeschooling requirement. So we did, we actually in an effort to kind of improve our data and really target enrollment, did do a lot of work. Mike Muscarat Director, Elementary Director Mike Muscarat did a lot of work with our pre-K programs in the area to try to promote our program so that we could get more information about our student population that was coming into kindergarten. And we were anticipating a nice group of students who were going into the pre-K program so that we could get them ready for kindergarten. And we were monitoring those trends. And then this happened and it really affected our overall enrollment. So when you look at our kindergarten enrollment overall, we lost about a hundred, a hundred students between the five elementary schools coming in. And then, as you mentioned, we lost about a hundred students going to either homeschooled or some of the private placements. Some of those came back, but overall, that accounts for most of the three hundred-ish students that that overall in our enrollment went down. So is there cause for alarm? Not yet, I wouldn't say. Over time, we certainly want to continue to boost our enrollment. I I think the focus that we've had on our instructional program will be important to promote the district to our families as we continue to make improvements. But the other thing is to monitor some of the cohorts. So even though it doesn't really look like it on the data, we do have cohorts that tend to be bigger than others. So when they leave, we do see a gap. And across really the nation, the twelfth grade cohort that graduated in in June, that cohort was typically a big cohort of students. Those were post nine eleven babies. And we'll probably see another cohort in another seventeen years from now and have a big cohort of COVID babies. So, so you can always watch some of the significant historical events can impact our cohorts. I think Jeff Richards might be able to talk a little bit about trends in enrollment as he monitors it from our projection software.
Yeah, the projection software takes into account live birth. So we do believe that the students are actually there. They may just have, as Kelly kind of intimated that they just may be elsewhere right now. They might be home. They might be enrolled in a non pub. We would expect them to be coming back. You know, obviously, the the option of being able to be full, full attending for some of those non pubs was probably attractive for some parents rather than a hybrid or a non, non start. So we do anticipate the numbers. The numbers are looking like they're holding strong, if not slightly creeping, as I, as I mentioned last, I think March. So we don't, we don't anticipate declining enrollment at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Are we considering the possibility that these students who would have started kindergarten this year would actually do kindergarten next year, leading to a bubble in the cohort coming up?
That's what we're hoping for.
We could, or they could be enrolled in a kindergarten program elsewhere, I think, right, Kelly? So that would just mean reallocating staff likely condensed, you know, having a smaller first grade class next year and then a cohort, I should say, and then a larger cohort in kindergarten.
And let there be no mistake, Board Member Gianni, and to go towards what you and Dr. Rigstad were saying, our priority is that we want to gain in the district, right? So although we're in COVID right now, it's it's kind of the the curse of COVID, but we're also making it a priority that we're not standing still, just trying to survive right now. We're trying to move things forward so that our district continues to grow. It has to be a priority that we get Kenton back on the roll of growth and not decline.
Yeah, so we'll continue to lay some effort on understanding our enrollment trends and continue to move forward with promoting the district so that we can make sure that our students are continuing to remain static and or increasing. And in response, we'll be working on improving our programs. Were there any other questions for me? All right. Thank you very much. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Assistant Superintendent White. Great job, Mr. Cole as well. And from here, I'll turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Nicole Marasco for her summary.
Thank you, Superintendent. I have for you a summary report to the board and it includes the primary financial considerations and a presentation that I am going to present to you now. Bear with me. So hard to believe that it's already November. And we're starting to think about and look at budget considerations for our upcoming fiscal year twenty one, twenty two. So the primary goal of this is just to identify some things that we are looking at as we move forward and start to do that preparation of the budget. So as you can see, our timeline, it goes from right now today where we start thinking about it until the budget vote on May eighteenth of twenty twenty one. And there are several work sessions in between that point that will get us from here to there to get an inclusive budget from all of the stakeholders involved. So some things that we look at with our revenue budget, first is the revenue of our tax, our taxes. And looking at the tax cap is one of the first things that we do. And I'll be starting to get information on that to update and look at an estimated tax cap for this upcoming fiscal year. So some of the things that we look at are CPI or inflation, but there's other items that that affects the tax cap. So we may be able to go higher than two percent, even though CPI this year is not likely to be more than one and a half percent. Most of my colleagues are estimating that's what that number will be or the rate of inflation for the US. So like I said, the tax cap is not just the two percent or CPI. There are other things that affect that, including our pilots, our payment in lieu of taxes and our capital exclusion and debt service. So roughly this year, I'm estimating we, our tax levy limit to be two percent or roughly one point seven million based on historically where your tax cap has been. So other factors for our consideration. All this slide should really say is COVID. I mean, right now, we're looking at the potential for a twenty percent decrease in our state aid for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one fiscal year. Now, there's been no movement on that. The governor did give us all of our aid for our first payment in October. So that's good news, but they have come out subsequent to that in this presentation that I did saying that they are not going to pay us for any of the transportation costs. Let me back up. We get transportation aid is is one of the expense-based aids that districts incur, and then they receive the revenue in the following fiscal year. And the state has come out to say that they are not supporting aid on expenditures made in transportation after the start of the pandemic. So that's one thing we'll be looking at going forward to see what they're going to do and how they're going to carve out that amount. But on top of that, they have said they're looking at up to a twenty percent decrease in our state aid. So we'll know more about that as as the governor puts his initial runs out. That typically happens in the beginning of January. So we're expecting that's going to decrease or be flat. It just depends on if there's more shutdowns and how this year progresses for us as a state. And the federal government will come into play a little bit, considering that Joe Biden is president-elect and will be in the White House soon. We may see some more changes and more aid come our way, but there has been no update on that and we won't know for several months. One thing I am also looking into is this is the cessation mitigation program for NRG or the Huntley mitigation. So the, through New York State, they mitigated the pilot that we were to receive that we won't receive anymore. And we had a five-year agreement with them. They have subsequently changed that to be a six and seven year. So I'm looking into that right now to find out if that is something that we are going to continue to get next year and the following fiscal year. So this is just an overview and you can see this is our general fund revenue over the years. And if you look at the years twenty eleven, you can see we start to get less of the red, which is our state aid. And that's when we had our last shortfall and the state was going through some economic hardships and the governor took back foundation aid, also known as the gap elimination adjustment. And then you can see, as you start to get into fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, we're seeing a bigger amount of that red or or more state aid coming back to us. And during that time through twenty eleven through twenty seventeen, the district had a decrease in revenue of overall fifty three million dollars from the amount of foundation aid they were go, should have given us versus what they did give us based on the gap elimination adjustment. So next up, the expenditure budget. Currently, the salary trend over the last couple of years has been about three and a half percent on average for for all of the bargaining groups. And we're looking at roughly ten percent for TRS, which is really good, considering the economic conditions that the state is currently in. They've still had a good rate of return. So they're estimating about a ten percent cost for the district. Right now, it's about nine point, nine point five three percent. So cost for the district. Um, right now, it's about nine point, 9.53%. So in future years, we can expect it's probably going to go up higher. It has done that in, in the past when there were, uh, economic hardships in the state. So ERS is hovers around 15%. Uh, there's several tiers of ERS and there are different rates, but overall, uh, most people are in tier four and that, um, those combination of rates is roughly, uh, 15%. Health insurance has been trending around seven and a half percent. That number will have to be watched closely, um, as they come out with more mandates, although some of them, because we're self-funded, we don't have to do, we will probably try to offer during the pandemic. And, and we have and will continue to do that. We're reviewing the debt schedule, um, just making sure, uh, our debt level is staying somewhat flat considering the, uh, tax cap. So if you look, as I discussed, you can see the rates, um, for our employee retirement system and our teachers' retirement system increased over those years. We had discussed that our revenue had decreased. So we're going to continue to have to watch our revenue numbers, uh, as we move forward over the next three to five years based on where, um, the economics of the state and the current conditions of the financial crisis. So just some other items to think about. So, oh, guess I'm not good at this either. Um, too many clicks. Contractual step increases with all of the bargaining units were required to, to, um, continue to pay them and, and what their increases are. We've approved or you, you have approved the retirement, uh, MOA for the teachers. So some teachers can retire. So we'll see some breakage between the teachers that are retiring and that we didn't plan for this, this year and, uh, replacing those with new teachers. So that's good. And we'll see that next year as well for any teachers that are, are retiring as of, uh, June 30th year end. Two other things that we'll, we're, we'll be looking at moving forward is evaluating programs and the staff for those programs. And as Kelly was saying, we want to offer the best programs and just looking at and evaluating what those are and get really collaborating with the administrators and the principals and looking at what's working and what's not working and then finding out if we can, um, reallocate any of our resources to something else to try to make it better. So reserves and fund balance, hot topic these days. We want to continue our funding strategy, though it's unlikely that there will be excess funds this current fiscal year. And I'm working on a current projection of fund balance to see where we will be or where I think we will be at year end, given, uh, some of the costs that we've had to incur due to COVID. Um, and the potential for our funding decrease, uh, for state aid. So, but if we can, obviously we want to continue to fund our, our reserves and select those. And I will keep an eye on, uh, the NRG cessation program, which is also the Huntley mitigation fund, uh, to find out if that is, uh, a million dollars that we potentially will be getting in the next couple of years. So here's just a, an overview of our fund balance and over the past couple of years. And you can see, um, the screen line is the change over those years. And we have started to use our capital reserve funds, so, um, to support our $75 million project. And I'm estimating we'll have to use some this current fiscal year. Um, that's why there's a, a small change for 2020, 2021. So what are we doing next? We're looking at what our current year's performance are. As I said, I'll be, uh, preparing a fund balance estimate very soon, um, to review, uh, with the administration and cabinet. And monitoring CPI for the tax cap. And we're going to really start to get out the department and the building budgets and starting to look at our programming and staffing analysis together. So, um, we have a good idea of where we're going to be next year. And really, um, looking at enrollment and what those trends are with, with the cabinet and, and looking at what we can do to, to make those numbers more consistent or things we can do to get more, more and better enrollment, um, going forward. So that is what I have for you on the budget. Uh, do you have any questions on that? Anyone?
Go ahead, please.
Okay, um, I just have a question. Um, I had mentioned that I'm going to write a letter to, um, Representative Hagan. And I wanted to add something in about our unbudgeted COVID expenses. Is there, do you have any idea if there's a way I could give him an idea of that?
Sure. So I-
Because you mentioned that the page was like, should have said COVID, so.
Yes. So we've, just in PPE alone, and I, and that does not include any of our technology needs, uh, like wireless internet or our one-to-one, uh, progression and speedup of that. Um, we spent about, uh, $410,000 just in PPE. And that includes everything from masks to, uh, the sanitizers, disinfectants, um, the scanners that monitor temperature. Um, so that's where we're about with, with just PPE. So I'm not sure if you want me to include, uh, the technology and the devices, because realistically, we were moving forward and progressing on that, um, before. We just kind of had to speed that process up.
Okay, no, that's fine. Thank you.
And, uh, you mentioned that as far as transportation goes, uh, the governor said post-COVID, we're kind of on our own to pay for things in that arena. Um, would that include, like, I think most years, uh, our budget includes, um, a request for 10 new school buses. And, um, I think we got a pretty good chunk of that reimbursed like the, the following year, but that is likely not to happen in this next cycle?
So they haven't said how they're going to determine that. So, uh, looking at our, our transportation aid, the way we get aided is we submit all of our finances online, through this, uh, portal. And basically they look at those, there's allowable, there's not allowable, they add them up, and then it spits out a number that this is what your aid's going to be based on your ratio. And we didn't have to segregate March 16th going forward out. So I'm not really sure how they're even going to determine what that number's going to be yet. So until I know that, I won't know how much that will affect. I don't think that includes, uh, school buses, but certainly that will be something I will be looking at.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much, Assistant Superintendent Marasco. What, do you have anything else?
Um, just my summary report to the board includes several reports, uh, but nothing else to report on. So if no one else has any questions on that, um, I think we're all set. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Um, and, uh, let's now, we'll, uh, land on Assistant Superintendent Richards, uh, for our human resources report.
Thank you, Superintendent Sumato. Good evening, everybody. I don't have a report tonight, but I do want to recognize, uh, the four retirees who are on the docket for tonight. We congratulate them on an outstanding, uh, career. Kathy Russo, Sandy Eaton, Don Wilkinson, and Pam Cusamano applaud you and thank you for your service and best wishes moving forward. And that concludes my report unless there's any other questions for me. Thank you.
Wow, that was wonderful, Jeff. Hey, it was a fast one. You made us all smile. So, uh, thank you very much.
Not often that happens in HR.
Not, not often, right? So, um, President Shemera, uh, that brings us to the, uh, consent agenda, and I'd recommend the consent agenda for board approval.
Okay, are there any requests to withdraw specific items from the consensus? And do I have a motion to approve the consensus agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Andrew?
I can.
Second by Leslie. Any discussion? There being none, I call for a vote. All those in favor, so signify by saying a aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Okay, item 12A, I'm going to turn this back over to Superintendent Sumato.
President Shemera, and this is that, uh, part of the evening that's a, a new part that whenever we have these acknowledgements, these recommendations, um, what I'm going to actually do, uh, for this, since we are virtual, I'm going to try and share my screen. Now, don't laugh at me if I get this one wrong, but I'm trying. Um, so I think everybody can see that, right? So I, I just wanted to share that that's what, um, uh, tenure, people that are receiving their tenure, along with the letter they'll receive, uh, that, um, Gina has really helped us out with, uh, this, this, uh, nice, you know, just on a, on a nice piece of paper that, uh, shows what their tenure date is. And I want to go through and actually acknowledge, um, all of these people. So our first, uh, person receiving their tenure is Elizabeth Askler. Our next is James Bedard. Then Melissa Detburn, Christopher Janestry, Kristen Hill, Anne Husvar, Laura J., Matthew Miller, Patrick Moses, April Osarzak, Carmelinda Pedanik, Kimberly Pietrowski, Adam Polka, Kara Sale, and Kelly Whipperman. So very special congratulations to all of these individuals. They are, they have worked very hard in our Kenton family to get to this point. And we really just, let's give them a round of applause and recognition for all of their hard work. And we wish that we were in person to be able to do that because it has a much better effect when we're all together, standing and clapping for people who are in attendance. So, um, it, it is a wonderful thing, though, that they've accomplished. So thank you very much for that time to do that, Board of Education.
Okay, and item 13, other matters. Anybody have anything, uh, other to discuss?
Uh, I just have a question for, uh, Mr. Banker. Um, and again, it goes back to, uh, something that you, you mentioned, Mr. Banker, at the October board meeting and that, uh, Superintendent Sumato reinforced, uh, tonight about our student athletes wearing quite commendably, uh, their masks during, uh, fall contests. Um, and I mean, that's meant mostly, I think, as a courtesy, uh, to opposing players so that we don't infect them unwittingly with, with COVID-19. Um, and last meeting, uh, Mr. Banker, you mentioned that it wasn't, uh, reciprocated by some of the other teams that we played against. And I'm wondering why Section Six didn't, you know, mandate a, a, a mask-wearing policy for games in fall sports? If you had any thoughts about that?
Yeah, I do, Dr. Rigstad. Um, you know, there, not to make an excuse for the section and the executive director, but there's 90 high schools in Section Six. So I'm involved with a section and the executive director at the time chose what he thought was the most effective way to communicate. He did that through leagues. So he asked the five leagues throughout Section Six, so he didn't have to venture out to 90 schools. He asked the leagues to put together a plan, um, which we did. I don't know if you guys lost me?
I can hear you. Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, sorry about that. Our league was very proactive and worked with the Niagara Falls Memorial Medical Center to create our protocols and worked with our athletic trainers. So having said that, I did approach the, our league twice on two different occasions with concerns that we, we as a league weren't even upholding what we had agreed to. Um, so I took those concerns to the league, as I said, on two occasions. Um, I'm still disappointed in some of the schools in our league in terms of their reaction, but it was communicated. I hope that answers your question. I, uh, Mr. Slate is an outstanding executive director. He, again, chose to work through the leagues and, um, expected us to do better. Kenmore did fantastic. Um, the other seven schools in our league, um, I'm sure the two student trustees would agree that they were less than consistent.
Yeah, it's kind of head-scratcher to me. Um, but, uh, hopefully next fall, we won't have to deal with that.
Let's hope.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Dr. Rigstad, excellent point, though, because the same frustration that you're verbalizing, uh, we heard from a lot of our families and definitely our athletes, but even more of a reason why we should be so proud of our students because they were just so consistent when not necessarily others were. And that's, that's usually the true testament to leadership is when you're willing to do it when others aren't, uh, on the same page. So they really did a great job.
Okay, the only, the only other thing, we did have a, uh, late public comment submitted by Denise Amato of 155 Zimmerman Boulevard. And her topic was on random mandatory COVID testing. So I just want to point out to the public that you can access that on YouTube, YouTube Live link and, uh, the board should have it in our, our Google Doc document. Anything else? Anybody? Okay, we don't have a need for an executive session tonight, so, uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Tom?
Second.
Second by Jen, I think it was? Um, any discussion? There being none, I call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? And we are adjourned. Thank you. Good night.
Good night.